To go and the purpose of this meeting is to go over. Operating budget information from Mr. Williams. So Kent, I'll turn it over to you.
I want to pull your microphone close there, Kent.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll, I think y'all have the book here. We have two parts to the book, the operating budget and supplemental information. So just go ahead and start with the. Operating information. Think Heather has that information that. Share screen and. If you scroll down to the. The notes. Second page down. Might just say a few words about the. Well, concept of the. All update and we do this every year. This is a time of the year we. The budget. That was approved, the operating budget that was approved in August and. Look at it this time of year, see what kind of changes would be appropriate. The main thing, of course, is to look at our revenues, especially the student revenues. Now that we know the first semester enrollment, we have a basis for estimating the annual. Current annual revenue from student sources and that is a big change this time. We'll get into that. Also look at any modifications that we know of to the expenditure budget and that. Gives say the board an idea of where we're at at this point in time. Also gives the administration. A basis for going ahead with our budget development for the FY twenty-three budget. We're in the FY. Twenty-two year now. Sounds a little futuristic that we're looking at the FY twenty-three budget, but that's where we're headed. So. First page before we get into any of the. The fund balances or revenues or expenditures and we have a little. Page where we put a few notes here and Heather has brought that up on the. The screen so people can see what we're talking about. And it's page OB one in your book OB for operating budget, page one. And the main thing I wanted to. Look at here or draw your attention to is the credit hours and you can see we've had a pretty steady decline. From twenty nineteen for the current year. You can see that we're currently now estimating one hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and eighteen credit hours. We originally budgeted for one hundred and forty-two thousand credit hours. So that's a fairly significant change. We ended up. Last year with hundred and forty-one thousand roughly and so currently our estimate is about. Almost a five percent decrease from last year. So you will see when we get into the revenue numbers. That's created a significant change in our. Projection for student revenues for this year. Then there's some information on the. Evaluation and the mill levies. That's all. You know, same numbers that we showed you basically from where, when you approved the budget back in August. And. And we include a little history on compensation there. Can see that. You know, this, we didn't have any compensation increase for FY twenty-one and a five percent for last year. So. Currently, we've given the five percent raise to the staff, the not non. Professional employees as the statutory language calls them and we, we have a five percent placeholder. Still in the budget for the professional employees. Of course, we're waiting to finish up negotiations before that can be finalized. So any question on that? We had Heather, if you want to scroll down to the next page. We'll start here, but we'll probably bounce over to pages three and four also. So you can see that the. The current operating revenues have decreased in our estimate. By one million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So Heather, if you wouldn't mind scrolling down to the next page, we'll look at the detail. Of. What that is. So obviously the, the first set of numbers there. Going down to. Line eleven. Is the. Different categories of student enrollment. And so the overall. Number of the revenue decrease is a nine hundred and three thousand, two hundred and eighty-four. Which is basically caused by that five percent enrollment decrease that we're projecting for the current year. So that's the biggest factor. Then if you look on down to line sixteen. The current ad lorum tax. As you recall, the. The recommendation that we brought to the board on July twenty-sixth and that's the first column, those figures. The board chose to reduce the actual taxes to be levied for the current year. After we brought that recommendation. So this seven hundred and eighteen thousand is the amount of. Tax revenue estimate that we're decreasing for the current year based on that. Direction from the board that was approved in the notice of public hearing and obviously approved at the August board meeting. So that's the other big change from the July twenty-sixth update. The line below that, the taxes in process. And that's always an estimate at the end of the year for the upcoming year. So our estimate. In July was a little high by almost ninety thousand. Dollars. So we. We have received the taxes in process that comes in in Nepal. So this is really an adjustment to the actual amount there. And the other change is the seventy-five, almost seventy-six thousand dollars in other income. And that's in interest income. I guess we were a little optimistic in our July estimate. And as Kim Sherwood has gone back and analyzed our. Projected interest income on what we call idle funds or funds that are in the bank. She's determined that it would be appropriate to reduce that estimate. So those are the. The factors that make up the overall revenue decrease that we're showing on page one. So couldn't stop me if you have questions, feel free to hop in at any time you have questions.
Had a couple on sixteen, I believe with the budget, we approved twelve point nine million. Dollars to be levied, total taxes. Why is it coming out now at twelve point zero two three?
The. The current taxes, the amount that we levy that you approved. We get about ninety to ninety-five percent of that this year. And then we had the taxes in process that come in in the next year.
So it'll still be the twelve nine levy. We're just not getting it all this year.
Yeah. You know. The delinquent minus the delinquency.
Let's say, because the newspaper published, I think. A long convoluted thing on all our bill levies, but it did have us, I think that. Like twelve, twelve point seven, something twelve point nine.
Yeah, that's the amount.
Valuations.
Right, that's the amount that is levied. And so we, we've. Received that amount less delinquencies or unpaid taxes, but it does come in over the two years.
I think the way you stated earlier confused me said we had reduced the taxes. We voted to cut the taxes by that.
Yeah, you actually, so that I maybe misspoke on that. Yeah, I think you. Reduced the taxes by a little more than that, but this is the amount of tax. The reduction that affects this year.
This year technically we left the taxes exactly the same and we allowed the mill levy, capital mill levy to sunset.
Well, what happens is you, you approved an amount for the county clerk to levy.
It was identical as last year's. That's not.
That's correct. In the general fund.
The general fund was. I was just.
Yeah, that's correct.
Say, I don't remember a tax cuts. I'm like, hey.
The amount that. And may, maybe I did misspeak. The amount that we included in the recommendation included. An increase for the valuation increase. And so it was reduced from our recommendation.
I guess technically the mills down a hair, but the dollars.
Yeah, that's correct.
And we didn't take the valuation increase.
That's where it gets confusing with everybody. I think mills.
That's correct. The amount levied in the general fund this year was the same amount that was levied last year. I think that's the main point. Next. Next time is the expenditure. Changes in the expenditure budget. And so Heather, if you wouldn't mind scrolling down to the next page. And. You want to point out. Here. On line one, this is the, the fifty-six million, one ninety-seven is the amount that. Was approved for the operating budget by the board in August. That included a three million dollar. What we call an intra-fund transfer. So it's not really. It reduces the operating budget, but it stays within the general fund. It goes over to a designated account. And. We haven't actually. Made that transfer yet on the books, but for operating budget purposes, I think it's better to show it. The adjusted operating budget of fifty-three million, one ninety-seven. That's the actual operating budget that was approved without that. Transfer over to the designated accounts. And so. Then these items from line five through eleven are changes that we've seen or that need to be made. At this point, we do have some positions. Or positions that have. Been added or increased for the testing center and a benefit specialist. Temporary track coach, busy. Visual graphics designer. So those are positions that have changed. Last year, there was a larger than normal reimbursement from the foundation. So we needed to make an adjustment there to the actual amount. Employee benefit adjustment, that's something that we analyze each fall. There's several million dollars in employee benefits and what falls in there is. Really payroll taxes and the health insurance contribution that the board makes. So Kerry goes in this time of year and. Reviews that and appears that we need to make this seventy-two thousand dollar adjustment to that. Then on the, the debt service. This goes back to the, the change that was made when we did the refinancing that John Haas walked us through. And we took the amount of savings. That is a net savings. We had already taken that, but actually there's more savings in twenty. Twenty-two, the current year that we didn't take. Because of the change and when the, the debt service is paid. But this, this amount plus a little more will actually need to be added back neck, next year. So it's just really a shift. This number, this hundred and ninety-three.
I'm just, I'm just confused.
Okay.
This is such so, so much double top. I'm just not used to this type of candy. So I apologize for that. But so I'm looking at the July budget right here. And this says that the recommended operating fund budget is fifty-six thousand, one ninety-seven.
Fifty-six million.
Seven, yeah, sorry, not fifty-six thousand. Anyway, and so this one over here, if I add the fifty-three. Million plus the three, that's the total. Right?
Yeah, the fifty-six is a top number on, on page four there. And that came directly from the. November, or excuse me, from the July update.
So this budget is actually bigger than what we had in July.
No.
If you add the three million to it.
We're actually subtracting a three million. Three million was. A transfer over to a designated fund.
Part of that money is being used for the self-insurance. Right, I could, I could read that, but does it go in this fifty-three and you're taking it out? You're adding it to.
It's from the fifty-six and we'll operate with fifty.
You'll operate with fifty-six. Okay, that's what I was trying.
No, we'll operate with fifty-three.
Fifty-three, okay.
Yes, we'll operate with fifty-three.
We'll operate.
So why is this on here even on this page?
It, it serves as a reconciliation. You have the, the July book there, right?
Yes.
And so in, when we showed you what was in the fifty-six in the July book and it's on page. OB. Four of that book.
Yep.
Down on lines twenty-two and twenty-three, it shows a million dollars transferred to the self.
Right.
Self-funded insurance and then another.
For designated.
And another two million for the, that's the three million we're talking about. So it was included in the fifty-six. Now basically what we're doing is taking that out because it's being transferred over to a judge.
So it's basically the same number.
Yes. The only changes that we're making, the real changes to the operating budget. Showing on the current page, it's up there on line thirteen to sixty thousand, four fifty-one. That's the amount of change. That we're recommending net to the current operating budget. So that, that's the expenditure side of it. So I'd like Heather, if you wouldn't mind going back to OB two, which is the summary page.
So where did? Sixty thousand, four fifty-one come from?
Yeah, where are those? It's the change on from line five through line eleven.
Okay, that's the net. Alright, that's the net of the changes. Very good. Thank you.
Sure. So those are the changes, those items that Dr. Pearl just referred to, are the changes that we're recommending at this time to the operating budget. So going back to. The summary page, OB two, on line four, I'd like to spend a little time talking about this. We had an unspent budget estimate of one million, sixty-three thousand, nine fifty-four. In the July recommendation. We. Took a look at that and over the past five years, our unspent, the average of our unspent budget. Has really been much closer to four percent. The million sixty-three is a two percent. And so we think it's a really more realistic. Picture to increase the unspent budget estimate. And I do need to emphasize that that's an estimate. Up to four percent, which gives us a two million, one thirty that you see again on line four under the current recommendation. So this, we'll, we'll keep monitoring this during the year. We have a lot of. Unspent budget for. Turnover in personnel and unfilled positions. So we think this is a little more realistic. Estimate of where we'll end up at the end of the year.
I don't remember what, what, how many positions did Shelley tell us the other day are, have, are still unfilled and. I mean, not that we aren't trying to hire some of those positions, but what did she say?
I think it's fifteen or sixteen.
I think there were fifty or sixty unfilled positions right now that we have. And so. That's, that's part of that unspent budget that's going to potentially sit there for longer during this budget year. So.
Had a couple of little questions. Like when we based our budget at a hundred and forty-two thousand, does it? Make it more difficult later to adjust things or it's just a ballpark guess at the beginning of one forty-two and then we just, as we go. When it's hitting closer to a five percent class. I mean, would it be beneficial next year to budget at a hundred and thirty-two thousand credit hours and base our budget on that? And if we had higher.
We have this discussion a lot in, every year in the VP meeting. And it's, so it's kind of a matter of philosophy, I guess. And what you. What's your best? Guess is, obviously to budget lower, if we would have budgeted for a reduction, that would have been a more conservative. Estimate and. You know, we've been a more comfortable position right now. You know, right now, we. Line seven, you can see that our current projected. Deficit budget is two million, one forty-four. Now we know that. That will change during the year. It usually does and we'll keep a, an eye on that, but. So I don't quite know how to. You know, which, which is better to, you know, if we budgeted. Lower and then it, now enrollment came in higher, then you know, we'd have that situation to deal with.
It's, it's hard to know because when you start that budget, you're, you're starting with everything's a estimate, you know, you don't know your enrollment. You're not quite sure. Well, you, you set your taxes that are levied. Kind of know, but you don't know what your state funding is going to be. And so it is, it's, you know, you're making your best estimate. But that's why I appreciate the fact that during the year, you know, you, the updates and you readjust as some of those numbers become more solid. And even this enrollment number, you know, that we're looking at. We don't, we don't know the final, this is partly based on twentieth day count of where we think we're going to be at the end of the year. But you know, the March update will have the final fall numbers. We'll know those, we'll know some spring enrollment at that point in time. So. Again, it's still fluctuates as we go along.
Yeah, we did a little analysis. On the student revenues and typically we have underestimated that at the beginning of the year. So hopefully this will be. Will come somewhat better than that. So that does sort of bring us to the. The bottom line here, earning unencumbered cash. Under this projection, if all these estimates and assumptions. Were to be actual, we would end up with seven point three million. Our ten percent, ten point five percent. Of expenditure goal on line fifteen is about five point five, most five point six million. So right now we're still looking at coming in over that amount. We do know that, that that's a fairly low, you know, unencumbered cash. Our, our ten point five target is. Is low compared to a lot of schools, but that's what we've been using for a long time and it's worked pretty well for us up to this point. So those, that's a pretty much includes my update on the operating budget like the. Obviously, if you have any questions or comments or discussion, we can take pause there before we move in over to the supplemental section.
You'd have to say something, don't I? On OB three, it says out of district tuitions down four hundred and ten. And industry is down ninety-nine. So I just. Just dividing that out, it's the interest, interest in district is down four point seven percent and out of district is down four point two. So out of districts down less than industry. So I would just circle back to Eson maybe. I know we've raised credit, credit. Two dollars a credit hour for out of district students, but I don't think it, I mean, it didn't.
I was going to ask if there was a negative impact.
Right, it seems like there was not. If, I mean, it was less than.
When you calculate percent change too, you also got to take into account the numbers that you start with. We've got a higher out district, you know, enrollment. Than we do in district. And so when we're, when you're calculating the percent change, you gotta, you gotta realize that.
Yeah, I mean.
The credit hour estimates show actually a greater reduction of out of district and industry.
Yeah.
Five percent of out of district.
Okay, and where was that one at? That's if you look at the, the projected credit hour revenues.
The projected deficit is greater for out of district.
Yeah, I didn't actually do a percentage decrease, but. Again, these are the current, current numbers that we're estimating in that FY twenty-two column.
Okay, I didn't look at that.
Yeah, we still know from. The work that is being done in admissions and advising, they're still, they're still COVID impact on enrollment. And nationwide, you know, the statistics nationwide talk about community college enrollment being down, you know, six, seven percent. And so we're, you know, we're still within that ballpark of what's being seen, you know, kind of nationwide, but. They're still getting lots of comments from students about, well, you know, I. Yeah, jobal finances or I want to, you know, want to wait just a little bit longer or whatever. So they're, they're still very excited.
So we'd like to spend just a little bit of time on the supplemental information and. Heather, if you wouldn't mind scrolling down to S one. S, S one. I'm just going to touch base sort of to talk about. What the designated funds are. These are funds that. Are within the general fund. We just don't consider them as part of the operating. Budget because. The theory behind these funds are they're going to be zero balance funds eventually, but we allow that. We allow them to carry over a balance year to year. But the revenues and expenditures in the long run should even out. So just an example down there in line thirty, you have transcript B account, which has a rather large balance in it. But over time, that's used to pay for equipment and certain needs in the. Enrollment management area. And so we do allow them to carry forward that balance. And so. You know. S one and then over on S, the next page, you see we have. Like fifty-five or sixty of these accounts. So I don't really want to go through them in detail. If you're, want more information on, you can let us know and we'd be happy to go back and let you know individually. What's going on there. On pages, maybe if you could go to S three, Heather. This is a summary of what we call the campus life bookstore funds. And in this, there's four separate funds here, but they're all within a system and, and the system goes back to when. We first. Built the initial student union and residence halls. They were funded by revenue bonds and these four funds. Were looked at as a total system to pay off those revenue bonds. Those bonds have been paid off for a long time and there's not very much. There's a little bit of debt in the residence hall right now, but, but not much. So you can see the. Four funds and like for the bookstore this year, we're estimating about a hundred thousand dollars. Of revenues over expenditures. That's kind of a sign of the times and what's happening in the bookstore industry. That number used to be consistently four to five hundred thousand dollars. And just with all the competition. Our efforts to make books more affordable. Uh, our efforts to make books more affordable for students, so our use of OERs at some of contracts. Um, has reduced that, but it, we're, we're becoming much more, I think, in line with the rest of. The, um, industry in that regard. Uh, food service shows a little bit of a, um. Deficit there projected for the year, but we look, usually look at the food service and the residence hall together. Because the contract that the students have is for both and you can see that this year. Um, we're showing a large, um, revenue over expenditure in the residence hall. Um, so I, I guess that goes back to our full occupancy and, um. Generally, we don't, um, show that much, so I'm sure Bill and his crew will take a good look at that. When they're looking at the, uh, rates for next year. Uh, the student union is showing a, um, deficit. We did increase the student fee by one dollar per cr- per credit hour for this year. Because we had experienced some, uh, much bigger deficits there in the past, so we'll continue to monitor that. And if you're interested, uh, you can look over on page, um, S A. And see what kind of expenditures we have out of that, uh, mostly salaries and benefits. For the, uh, custodial staff that maintains, uh, those facilities. Yes.
For just the student union part of it.
Yeah, that's a student union part of it. So it does take a, you know, a full staff of people, um, to take care of that building.
It's got, it's also got bookstore, I mean, divided the bookstore salaries and, you know, all of those, if you look at the other S four and S five. You know, six and seven, it shows salaries and benefits.
Right, we do.
And we, and we try really with this fund, um, I mean, you know, there's, there's a. Revenues over expenditures in this collective fund, but if it's used for something, if we, you know, talk about using the student union fund. Uh, we're pretty specific in wanting it to be student oriented, you know, something that has to do with student life or. Uh, the residence halls or student union or something like that, rather than tapping into this fund for just general expenditures. We really try to focus it very specifically on, uh, how does it, how does it impact students that live in the residence halls or, you know, use the student union or something like that.
What, a couple of years ago, the, the bookstore funds were kind of covering the student union to make it balance out.
Probably textbook fees mostly.
Right.
Textbook sales.
Yeah, textbook sales, um, yeah, we were allowing the student union portion of that system to show a deficit. Because bookstore was bringing in more, that's one of, now that the bookstore revenues, net revenues are lower, that's one of the reasons. We increased the student fee and we may have to look at that again in the future.
So the residence hall, uh, it looks like that we've, have we charged? Enough money to, uh, is that why it's so high, our revenue is so high there? Charged too much or an abundance.
We, we have charged our fees this year, yeah, apparently are more than covering our expenditures. Um, I haven't looked into the detail of that, I know.
Well, instead of absorbing that, is there anything we can do about maybe giving it back to the students of Bay州?
Right, I do wanna kind of touch base on that, um. In general, for the system, you can see that we're estimating the ending unencumbered cash balance of four million, seven hundred thousand. So the reason that we keep, like to keep that balance is that we, um. We have a lot of property there, we have the three dorms, the apartments and the union, so. Um, we keep a fun balance in there partly for contingency and for upkeep on those buildings over time. The residence hall specifically, Bill, you may wanna talk more about this, but you would.
Well, I can tell you like, um, we've got an issue with the one hundred level of West Hall. It keeps backing up over the Christmas break or winter break. We're gonna have to put in a new sewer line on the one hundred level, that's gonna be about fifteen, sixteen thousand dollar project. You're gonna have to get it done in about a month's time, uh, but that has to be replaced.
That seems pretty cheap for.
Seems really cheap, actually, that's what, that's why those funds exist.
And none of these were part of those funds that we got with COVID, none of these were on that maintenance schedule.
Sorry. They weren't, I mean, we didn't know we were gonna have to replace the sewer line until about three weeks ago.
And, and it's a self-sufficient fund at this point, truly kind of going back specifically to your question about. The fact that we're showing the two hundred and nine thousand, um, revenue over. Over expenditures this year and could we do something for the students, there's a process, Bill's, uh, really involved in this. Uh, and Carrie Potter from our accounting department, we also have the, um, you know, our. Facilities management director in there and, and some of the enrollment management people. So I'm sure they will take a look at this next year and if, if they don't determine that we need to charge this much. To the students in order to cover the expenditures, that'll be part of their, uh, consideration when they bring you the, uh. The fee recommendation in March.
Right, we, we sit down and we look at current budget, we look at what we would project our, our occupancy rate to be. And then we look at what needs facilities that's identified such as sewer lines, piping for HVAC and all of those things. What kinds of replacement of mattresses, replacement of desks and beds and all of that stuff. And look at what our expenditure is gonna be and then we take our best guess at where we think, uh, what the costs are. We also look at our competitors and what they're charging for, for their residence halls, uh, not necessarily Wichita State shocker hall. Uh, because it's a brand new facility, but we look at, at what Cali's charging and where, where we're at and trying to remain competitive. For room and board and also, I mean, obviously, we wanna keep our occupancy rate above the ninety percent level if we possibly can.
And I, my gut reaction, if you're mostly full, you're not charging too much because the people pay it, I mean, if it was too high, you wouldn't be full. And within reason.
Right, right. And the COVID factor just throws everything into.
I, COVID factor threw us for a loop a year ago and, and then this year, we came in a little bit better. Uh, I will tell you that the Villas properties are not as full as they were a year ago, so we've. Uh, I mean, we've, we have probably pulled some of the kids, they usually live over at the Villas. But they raised their rate significantly higher, students are not gonna pay that and they lived on campus and the Villas comes down.
They're off campus.
The Villas are off campus, right, they're the.
And they're privately owned.
They're not ours.
Do we guarantee any enrollment in Villas, any occupancy?
After that, we're, we're out from underneath that obligation, I mean, we work cooperatively with them. We provide our, especially if we have a waiting list, we let the parents know that the Villas are catty cornered from the campus. If you wanna consider that housing options, some of them take them up on it, some of them don't. The Villas is, is, uh, a little bit more expensive than say Walnut River. We have a number of students go to Walnut River because they can put two and three students in an apartment. Um, and split it three ways instead of three students in three different bedrooms.
They're, they're clear on the east side, aren't they?
They're clear out on the other side of the river, that's for it. We have a lot of, some of our softball players live out in, in the Walnut River because they practice at East Park. When they get done, they just drive up the road or walk back to their apartment, so it depends on. And what their needs are.
Yeah, depends on circumstance.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to move on, uh, to S nine, which is the HERF indirect money. This is a designated fund, or the general fund, but designated for items that are, are coming from the. The HERF indirect funds, things like, um, the, um, indirect cost reimbursement that we're able to claim. In the spray, the, um, revenue loss that we're able to claim and certain salaries that we get reimbursed for. Uh, from the, the HERF money, the COVID related money, so. The sources, uh, funds for this designated, uh, counter showed there on lines two through six. I do need to say though, that this is really an estimate that is in flux at this point. Um, some of the things that we, the guidance that we thought as far as taking indirect. Um, cost rate, uh, money and the revenue loss. We're, we're finding out those, uh, there were nuances in the guidance that we didn't fully comprehend. So we may or may not get these amounts that are shown here. Um, one thing that we're looking at which could help us in the, um. Deferred maintenance projects that you approved, uh, we, we were counting on taking the, uh, three hundred building. Um, and the HVAC portion of the sixteen hundred building, which is the EduCare remodel. We counted on taking those as direct expenses, um, we may be able to take. Uh, a good portion of the five hundred building, uh, as direct costs. Which then we're showing that, um, as coming out of indirect funds. So that would help us in a way that we would be able to utilize, um, the HERF money. Because we, uh, there's specific guidelines, so we could end up in a situation. Where we're not using all that federal money, even if that occurred, we could, could use it to pay off some of the. Student money that's outstanding, which would help us, so there's a lot of possibility here and it's. Uh, it's a moving, moving target, so.
So remind me, just which, what's in the three hundred building, just one subject.
The three hundred building, it's the HVAC, um, the heating and air system is being renovated. And heating and air upgrades are one of the items that the, is very specific in the guidance we're using to hurt money.
Right.
And what academic, what academic.
Okay, that's what I was looking.
Yeah, I should have.
Surely we don't have a building dedicated to HVAC, maybe.
No, my, yeah, the art and the welding are.
Okay, and sixteen hundred?
That's the EduCare, the old EduCare building. Five hundred, so yeah, and that's like a two million dollar project.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to get it straight in my head. So you're saying that it might be possible that we could use our own money for some of these because of the fact that we have so many restrictions on.
Or we might get to use more HERF money and free up our money, yes, which would be ideal.
That would be.
That would be better.
Yes, man.
With all the strings attached, just after which string goes where. Yeah.
Yeah, so, um. Yeah, I'm sure it's really done a Herculean job of trying to analyze this, uh. So we're gonna try and.
I do have one question.
Get back in and regroup there.
On line six, COVID related salaries, how many people does that represent?
Um, it might be easier if I told you what it was for, so like our police department. Security is one of the, uh, items that the HERF money, the guidelines were very clear. That we could reimburse ourselves for our police department, so we, a portion of this is from our police department. It was also very clear that we could.
So have we increased our police department?
No, the, the, the grant actually allows us to reimburse ourselves for existing salaries there. The same holds true in our student health area and also, um. We were able, we've been keeping track of our custodial and maintenance people who, you know, like. The disinfecting.
Perhaps overtime related to.
Yeah, not even, not even overtime. But even within their, um.
Okay, their focus on that.
The percent of their workload that's become focused on COVID related mitigation.
So what's happened is they've had to, to use more of their time doing that, which saves them less time to do.
Increase in people, that's just a reflection of what we are allowed to compensate ourselves for.
Yes.
Right, we're paying them anyway, but then we can reimburse part of it with her.
Yeah. So, um, we'll hopefully, when we update this in March, we'll have a clearer picture of how the HERF money is all gonna. Pan out. So the next couple of pages are on adult basic and adult stuff, those are small funds. Pretty much, uh, self-sustaining.
Grant funded, we're basically a pass through.
Yeah, the ABE is a pass through, the, uh, adult supplemental on S eleven, that's really our non. Non-credit programs, um. And, um, page S twelve, this is another designated fund, the academic program development fund. Um, sort of, uh, seed money a lot of times for projects, a facilities fund. On page S thirteen, technology fund, unfortunately, I'm not gonna, you know, unless you wanna go through those.
I'm not giving Bill any more money.
And, um, over on page S sixteen. Uh, this is, um, our latest.
Sorry.
Accounting for the, uh, capital mill levy fund, we still.
I had this turned off, I'm so sorry.
That's.
I did.
So, um, we do still have some money available, you see the November balance, I think. Some of that, there have been projects that are, are, uh, will be in the works for that. I know Shelby, you had a, a question on expenditures to date down on the Hardens Data Center. The eight hundred eighty-two thousand, and I went back and looked at that and, uh, you had mentioned there's. You are aware that eight hundred eighteen thousand of that was for Simpson. Um, there's also, uh, fifty-nine thousand dollars that went to Gravity Works. For the architectural portion, which is seven percent of the, um. Seven percent of the Simpson contract and then there was about another forty-five hundred, which were just, um, you know, there were some things. So we just went out and purchased that Sutherland's or plumbing that we got that were covered by the.
Okay.
Contract, so that's what makes that up and I've got a detail here.
That's why I know, I gotta print it out on the SharePoint, but some of it's lighter print than some of it's darker print, I'm like, it's easier to ask a question at that point, try to.
Yeah, so the big piece was Gravity Works, which is seven percent of the Simpson contract.
I know the original estimate was nine twenty-six ish and they took off some for. A student.
Yeah, the, the original estimate was very conservative, highest, so it came in under once we caught everything beat out. Uh, there's some information on scholarships and agency accounts. There was, uh. Yeah, that, that's really, uh, everything I think I kinda wanted to highlight here. So if there's comments or questions, I know Shelby, you had one other question that you.
The maintenance of effort question, you had a.
Oh, yeah, I didn't know what that is.
It's on S twenty.
Number twenty-three.
Yeah, it's a, it's a large amount, it's like nine hundred nineteen thousand that we received and that is a, uh. Grant from the state and the state is obligated, um, to maintain a certain amount of. A percentage of overall increases to higher education and to K twelve and. And apparently, and Dr. Crowe is surely more fluent on this than I am, apparently with the increase to K-12, in order to maintain this percentage that the state has to maintain, they needed to provide additional funding to higher ed. And they have to do this in order to maintain their federal funding. So.
Kbor and Kbor, the amount that went to the four-year institutions, Kbor designated that in a different way. The funding that was allocated for the two-year sector, they distributed based on our regular distribution formula. And the guidelines are that it has to, it can be, it can only be spent on one-time expenditures and has to be spent by the end of this budget year. So software, technology, you can't use it for like multi-year licensing things or anything like that because it's a continuing expense, but so software purchases, equipment for academic programs, you can actually use it to fund personnel. As long as you designate the timeframe that that person will be paid with this funding. So like in, in admissions, Jessica and her team needed some additional like recruiting help. And so the job description that they wrote was essentially like a grant funded position. The funds will be available through the end of this current year. And so we hired a I don't know, 20-hour a week person, I think, to help. So it, it it's, and it's not funding that we'll necessarily see every year. It's just that we ended up with some of it this year or so.
As far as we know, it's a one-time thing.
Yeah.
Could, yeah.
So some of the things that we've spent it on are designated at this point in time. We, we're buying a trainer in auto tech that'll be using auto tech and diesel. We're buying some construction tech tools. We're paying for the, you know, the training props that fire science is putting up. The part that the city's not paying for, we're using maintenance of effort fund because that's a one-time expenditure and that's considered classroom equipment because it's training equipment. So we've, we've got a list of things that, that people have requested that we use the funds for. And we'll have to, we'll have to report. I mean, we haven't had to report anything to Kbor at this point in time, but they'll, they'll ask for a report at some point in time on how those funds have been expended.
What else do you have, Ken?
I think my presentation is concluded. Miss, there's things you want to know?
Send an email out.
I think he's got a message.
Answered them.
My only other one, I think, was on the on S9, the BKD says budget 115 and 115. I think we approved like 40 something. Was that just a guess of what it might cost or?
I think we had included possibly some other packages, like they have this predictive package that deals with like trying to predict the CFI and
First of all, package.
You know.
Did this also include implementation, training and implementation too? Do you remember?
The current amount that was approved does include implementation.
Okay.
So, so we'll need to go back probably in March and reevaluate that and we may need to lower that number.
I got my only other one.
You know, it's another thing that I would maybe mention and I know it's maybe we're getting close to an hour, which is probably about.
Which is where we need to be. We'll go ahead and wrap it up.
Yeah, real quickly is, you know, the next thing that we'll be doing administratively is now starting to look at the budget development for next year. You know, base budgets, additional need requests, potential reductions. We'll look at all that in the VP meeting. And then the next decision that will be, to be made by the board will be for the tuition and fee rates and we'll bring you a preliminary recommendation, at least, at least no later than February and ask you to approve that in March.
Very good. Dr. Crowe?
Two quarterly KACC meetings coming up December 3rd and 4th in Pratt. And if you want to join the trustees portion, I haven't, Heather hasn't set out final agenda yet, but I know trustees can join by Zoom. I think for sure on Saturday, Friday afternoon is trustees meeting and there's going to be campus tour and some things like that. So I don't know that Friday afternoon, but, but my understanding is there's not a president's meeting. So I can get that information for anybody that wants that. And then mediation hearing is set up for the 29th again in the afternoon and Shelley's been out sick. This last week she talked to the mediator today and they're still finalizing some of the details about that, but I think you'll be able to connect to that by Zoom and watch if, you know, if you're interested in doing that. So Heather will be. It'll come probably, I don't know, yeah, either Heather or Meredith help. Meredith is the one that's been. She's the one that attends the MGB meetings and manages the Zoom stuff. So it may come from Heather, but we'll, we'll get it to you. Yeah, you can, well, the only thing that you'll be able to listen to is the joint portions of it when, when we're actually together.
Not when you're caucusing.
Not when we're caucusing that, that'll be executive session. I mean, yeah, private, yeah. So. I'll have to go back and look because the schedule, the initial schedule that I've seen starts at three in the afternoon. So I'll have to find out. I have a call into Heather today and just, I haven't heard that.
So you have executive sessions for this too?
Well, they're not called executive.
They're not called that, but their caucus is when the two sides meet privately to come back to the general discussion.
I know with the BKD, I didn't realize the burden upon the finance department and all that. So if there's something that you guys need from us, our temp or somebody that would help, if you guys have a recommendation for that next month, you let us know because it might, if you've got enough on your plate anyway, you just need let us know if you need something to help facilitate that.
Yeah, that's.
Might be an idea for you, you know.
We, we have talked about this. There are difficulties with the temp helping.
Well, yeah.
What?
I understand, I understand that. The amount of training might exceed their value.
Right, right.
And we have, trust me, Kim and I have talked about that, but we right now, we think the implementation process is doable. And we'll get a lot of help from Roger Marrow from the IT department. I think BKD think their timeframe, it's like 12 weeks. So it's, it's not, not like trying to feed you or water from a fire hose. They're, they're doing it in a way that we think is going to be managed.
Really still like to see a demo. I'd really still like to see a demo. Been asking for that for, I don't know.
While they're doing it, so.
Well, I don't know. I think they have enough data on their little fake stuff.
BKD has a demo. Right, if we want to schedule it.
Yeah, I think it's a choice because lots of times the demos provide, you know, really kind of overarching view of, I mean, it will be specific to what, you know, to necessarily what we're getting. So I don't know. I've asked for it. Shelby's asked for it, but you know.
Perhaps it wouldn't need to be for the entire board. It might just be a sit-down thing for those that are interested.
I'm just happy to get them going and find out more data.
Because I'm sure there's an overview of how the program works and if you could.
It might even be available online.
Yeah, well, there you go. That's a good idea too. All right. I believe this meeting is now concluded. Work session, my bad. I just, it's not really a real meeting, but it was fun to do.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Bill.
Have a good Thanksgiving.